Good evening, everybody. I'll call to order the Monday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty one Board of Selectmen meeting. It is six P M. We're at the Free Town like a model school. First, we're gonna keep it over to George for personnel board, and then we're gonna move on to the regular Board of Selectmen items.
Okay. I'm going to resend the appointment of Jessica Thomas as Taxation Aid Committee member, as a custodian of tax possessions, Health Insurance Advisory Committee, and Public Records effective ten one, twenty twenty one.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accept the resignation of Altia Brady from the Essau wants as pond complex effective ten twelve, twenty twenty one.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appoint Patricia Rodrick as Taxation Aid Committee member, Custodian of Tax Possessions, Health Insurance Advisory Committee, and Public Records effective ten four twenty one.
Yes, I think through six thirty twenty two, yeah. Yep, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appoint Donna Mata to the Cultural Council effective ten eighteen twenty one through ten eighteen twenty four.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, where?
So this is just a discussion, potential vote on additional hours to Debbie's?
Yeah, do you want me to leave the room? Would that be more comfortable than?
No, I mean, um, so I think George, you might have mentioned, I mean, I don't know if you've talked about this before with Debbie, but if currently, I mean, how many hours do you have a week right now?
I have nineteen hours a week and I'm probably, I've been working about forty.
Four, yeah, so there's obviously more work than I think we anticipated.
Wow. Um, it's a full-time job, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we were a little optimistic when we did forty hours. So, um, any discussion on?
No, I just think it's very clear cut, obviously, we need to pay people for hours of work, right? So I don't think anyone's gonna argue that, so.
I don't think Debbie's in a position she can say, oh, well, I'd like to help you on this, but I can't do it because my hours are up for the week. You know, we don't want that to happen, so I think we have room in the budget, you know, for this right now. So I, I mean, I would, I would suggest we just go to forty hours that she's currently working. There's obviously some benefit situation there, right? But I know you're not on the, taking the healthcare anyways.
And so what will happen is probably me and George will look at the contract and then we'll come back with the contract.
Yeah, we're supposed to say, uh, update the contract, right?
So we can discuss it in terms of.
I mean, we can take a vote today to do that, and then we'll, we'll do the details after that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion to increase Debbie's hours to forty hours a week.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, George. So now, move over to my stuff. So first, we have approved of the meeting minutes from nine twenty seven, twenty twenty one.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right. Aye.
Um, next, we have discussion and vote on the contract between Town, Free Town and Comcast to add internet Wi-Fi to the, um, to the fire stations at one, uh, fire stations one and fire station two. Looked at it, looked pretty, looked at paperwork, looked pretty straightforward. It's like a hundred dollars, I think is what it cost for a.
Term loan?
Uh, yeah, that's what it was like, or. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's a hundred and nineteen ninety-nine a month.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, they need to have Wi-Fi there. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve, um, this contract.
Motion made. Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right. Aye.
All right, um, discussion and vote on approval of the ambulance abadements in the amount of seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents, and write-offs in the amount of two thousand, eighteen dollars and eighty cents, totaling seventy-six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars for the month of September. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance abadements and write-offs.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
All right. Aye.
Aye. Um, discussion about on the approval of the agreement between Town and Free Town and public employees, Local one one four four Laiona, effective July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty four. And so looks like we've got everything ironed out on this?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, that's very exciting news, and that's great. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agreement.
Motion made. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, uh, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we're gonna go through the special town morning, uh, meeting warrant, and, you know, will consideration of, in vote of all warrant articles, including recommendations to support, refer to further study or other action, or pass over. So, I think, so the, the version I have from last week is not, is that most up to date?
No.
Who's anyone?
Yes, it hasn't changed.
It hasn't changed, okay.
Oh.
So I don't think we need to.
Because we can't change the warrant once it's posted. Anyways, we can only do it in the meet, you know, make motions in the meeting, but once it's printed and posted, it's the warrant. So nothing in the actual one has changed.
So, okay, good, so I think that the best way to do this is... Let me think, I'll, I'll, I think I should go through all the articles, just read, just read the headlines. If we have any questions, we can pause.
Yeah, go through them, because some of them will be, um, um, probably withdrawn on the floor, they, from their committees, and I have that information, I went over it earlier today, so I can kinda give you a heads up on what may happen. But there are some that the selectmen do need to make a recommendation to do something with it.
Yep.
So that we can have that on the.
All right, so I'll make a list of things, of the articles we'll support, and then the articles that will, um, refer to further study or, or other action, and then pass over.
Mm-hmm.
So then I'll just do one motion at the end of that.
Okay. Did you cover the other warrant? Find any chance for George?
Just tell me what article one is.
Okay, I.
You're missing every other page, you want, you can look at this.
I'm missing every other page? What does that have?
Uh, because it was the way it was copied.
Oh.
Okay, so article, we're, are we ready, or I can?
Do you wanna look at mine?
You can look over my.
This seems okay, if I get to a page I need to.
Is article one or two?
Okay, so article one is engineering for the storm water management plan. I think, are we all familiar with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna put that into support column.
Okay.
Uh, purchase of zero Elm Street, Tisdale Pond Dam and Waterline?
That's a hold.
Hold that, okay.
Oh, thank you.
Just gonna do it. All right, that's two. Three is design service project management, uh, and bidding for renovation modeling on the council on aging. So, do we all support that?
I support it, yeah. So just to be clear on what we're doing with that, it already had five hundred thousand.
Correct.
This article is doing another five fifty.
Correct.
And I think that may be enough for them to get started and maybe get the addition of what they requested.
Yeah, so I guess the, the first article we passed last year, the, where those monies could be spent was a little restrictive. And so just kind of, that was like more design, that side of it. This will allow just a little more flexibility on what they can actually spend the money on, hopefully get the ball actually rolling. I do not think this will be the, this will not cover everything, based on the, on the quotes, I use that word loosely, that we got from Pompous.
Right, this is the next step in that procedure, so.
Probably it'll take to, to the annual town meeting to get a final number.
Yeah.
But this will fund.
Yep.
We'll fund the next.
Is that right, sir? Is it really very sunny in here?
My eyes water from the UV. It's a medical condition.
Okay, okay, so moving on, this is a purchase of the new riding lawnmower for the highway department. It's eleven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, thirty cents, support that.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Article five is funding for the, uh, union contract for the dispatchers.
Yeah.
I support it. Uh. Yeah, so it's seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-six cents, comes from tax.
Just reading mine, I don't need to.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, uh, Article six is funding for the union contracts with the firefighter association.
Let's go to four.
Sure, all right. Uh, Article seven is funding for the, uh, contracts with the clerical union.
Let's go to four.
Funding, uh, sorry, Article eight, funding for the union contract for the Free Town Highway Union. Four. Nine, union contract for the police association. Now, we don't have a number there yet, I don't think we will.
Correct, we don't have a number, so you really have to probably make a motion to indefinitely postpone because we don't have a number.
And we can't withdraw the article, so?
No.
A motion to postpone?
Pass over, you can make a motion to defer, you can make a motion, but who are you gonna defer to? Really, nobody, we don't have a number, we're just waiting to get through the negotiations. So you can make a motion to indefinitely postpone, or that's really it, or, you know, pass over.
How are we going to fund this? That's gonna be an issue.
We can't fund it because we don't know what it's going to be.
No, I agree.
So it's gonna have to go to the next town meeting, and they're, they're gonna have, that's, they're gonna get probably retroactive to, uh, June October one, twenty twenty one.
Well, the next town meeting will be in April, so that might actually, we might be, might be a split, no?
So now, that motion will be during town meeting, I don't have to make that motion now, do I?
So what will, what I would suggest, the way you're going through things, is at the end of all the articles, you're gonna make a motion to support Articles one, three, four, you know.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yep.
And then, um, we'll circle back to Article two that, uh, George wants to talk about, and then, um, we, we can just say that they, you know, that the selectmen either don't have a recommendation on these articles that really, um, need to be passed over or postponed, or that you recommend they be indefinitely postponed.
Okay.
So you just let me know, like I said, we can make no recommendation, and then the moderator will most likely really can't vote on this, it doesn't have a dollar figure, so it really can't be voted on as it's written without a dollar.
Yeah, that makes sense, all right, so I'll just come back to that, postpone. All right, Article ten is supplement department expense fund. So this was, um, pretty much taking money from the old colony, that we were spending on old colony, and transferring that to BP? That much.
And a couple of other things.
And a couple of other things, yeah, so. Okay, so that's Article ten, so let's support that. Article eleven, supplement the department personnel budget? That's the same sort of thing, it's taking money that.
It's reclassifying.
Reclassifying it.
Yeah.
So just for the transportation from, uh, from home.
Article twelve, this is, uh, the highway surveyor salary increase. It's, um.
A two percent increase.
Yes, a two percent increase. Two point zero one percent.
I support that, I don't have the, uh.
So it goes from seventy-two thousand, six eighty-eight to seventy-four thousand, one fifty-two.
Yeah, what I do.
Okay.
Article twelve, yeah. Has Article fifteen.
Okay. So this is Article thirteen is a Kynex storage box for the highway department, the cost of twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I'm okay with that.
Worth that, they, they definitely need one.
Three.
Yeah, okay.
Three, three, three boxes.
Do you have, so now you have fourteen now.
Sorry, boxes, you're, you're right. Three, you're right. I was gonna say that, seem expensive, but I don't know how expensive Kynex boxes are right now.
We could do, we could do a lot better if we shopped it, and maybe something you, you should suggest that.
I'm gonna point you as a Camellia Juan. You love shopping.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't alone.
Say aye.
We love guests.
We can maybe put that out for, you know, get quotes when we do procurement.
Yeah. Yep. All right, so next is Article fourteen, which is the water sewer enterprise supplement to general funds. This is changing the way that the, um, well, actually, no, sorry, it's not.
This is, yeah, this, this will probably, um, should be also indefinitely postponed, or.
Well, why are we postponing it?
Because we, we did the, the other, the meeting that we had last week with them, um, reduce the indirect costs. So we no longer need to supplement that money because the indirect costs were reduced by, um, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, you're right, okay.
So it's kind of, it's kind of void now, yeah.
So it's kind of a mute issue, so, um, I didn't remove it in case we didn't come to an agreement at that last meeting, but we did.
Yeah.
So this is mute at this point, so this will.
And how would we deal with that on the floor?
So, um, well, Mike and I, uh, the moderator have met, and they, he knows, but I would say that the, um, selectmen can have zero, you know, not recommend anything, or just recommend, I don't even, indefinitely postpone, pass over.
Yeah, I have that in mind, definitely postpone, or bucket.
So.
Okay, so supplement, the, uh, Article fifteen is supplement to board assessors in health insurance. So this one is to, uh, for eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, increasing the hours of the part-time clerical position with the board assessors, fifteen hours to twenty hours per week. These funds allocated as follows, so it breaks down to three thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars to be added to the budget for the board assessors, and eighty, eight thousand, five hundred and fifty to be added to the budget for health insurance and other.
And what is the other?
So what that is about is, because the position's only been fifteen hours, it's hard to attract, um, good, you know, uh, talent. So they're asking for the town to increase the position from fifteen hours to twenty hours to attract, attract a better talent. But when they do that, it might trigger the health insurance, so the town accountants have, there's no money in health insurance budget to cover if you're offering benefits. So this, this warrant article gives, gives the permission, you know, they're asking to increase the number of hours for the assistant, uh, you know, the clerk to help the assessor.
This is from Mike.
It's Mike's, yeah, that's his department. To go from fifteen, not for Mike, it's so Mike can hire a clerk to work with him part-time.
So, yeah, it's a, it's a vacant position, right, that they're trying to?
It's a vacant position that they, that they feel, they feel like they can't attract any talent because of the number of hours, and they don't want for benefits.
I support that, you do, you gotta do to hire people.
Yeah. And obviously, something's not right, we're not getting any applicants or.
Right.
And I'm sure they've gained feedback from people's angle.
Right, there's a little, yeah.
Do you run any positions in town hall, or?
So there's no other available positions. One of the things that I, I will probably try to bring before the selectmen, I need to spend a little more time with it, is possibly hiring a full-time position as a floater and funding it partially from this and partially from the selectmen's budget, but I have to make sure we have the money, because in the past, when we hired floaters, they have been funded through the selectmen's office, so.
Cause it doesn't really fit in any particular place.
It doesn't, right, um, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent there yet to come to a meeting and, and give all the information I need to give on that.
No, the only thing I have to say about this is I don't have a problem with it, but having said that, we, we have other holes in town hall.
We have a lot of holes.
And, you know, picking at this piecemeal, I think we might be better off holding this up and kind of getting a group plan and.
So you can not necessarily hold it up, you can not recommend it, you can say the selectmen doesn't recommend this article. You can not say anything, and just, you don't have to recommend or not recommend. Or you, you know, so just so you know, cause it's already on the warrant, and it's been approved to be on the warrant, we can't take it off the warrant, and we can't, as a board, withdraw it. We can only make a motion to recommend, and I recommend, and offer to defer it. When you get to the floor, the town people, you know, the residents can do, because it's already on there, they can do it that way.
I, I, I don't have a problem that we need to do something, but doing it this piecemeal.
I, I see.
I agree with that, we, but maybe leave this one alone, and recommend this one, and get this one out of the way, and then work on the others as a whole.
I mean, this is, shows.
Already made it this far, with it, why not just finish this one out, I guess, is my point, and then.
And, and, you know, like I said, I'm gonna try to, I'm, I'm gonna be working on maybe making this a full-time position floater that I can put in his office for twenty hours a week, and this gives us the funding to possibly do that, but that, you can't go by that.
So maybe we don't make a recommendation on this one, I mean, I'm.
Well, let me ask you this, uh, let's say we pass it, do we have to act on it?
Well, the town's gonna, the town's gonna act on it based on the vote today.
The town's gonna act on it, but we'll have funding there, doesn't mean that.
That we go ahead and just plug the hole with this person at fifteen hours. What I'm getting at is, I'd like to see a nice organized way that we look at the big picture, because we're, we're just shoving, you know, somebody here for ten hours, somebody there for fifteen.
Yeah.
And that's something that we can definitely have Debbie, you know, put as a point of interest of, you know, importance or whatever.
So, I mean, we can pass this, and I'll just.
Pass it, meaning recommend it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, but not, not fill the position until we have a plan.
To get, regroup, which I, you know, I've already started working on things, but we'll talk when we come in.
Okay, so are you okay with?
Yeah, yes, yeah, so.
For putting this in just for budget purposes, and then we need to regroup?
Yeah.
And decide what the staffing really needs to be.
Yeah, rather a piecemeal, I agree, I agree.
Mm-hmm, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Is that okay with you, sir?
Absolutely.
Great.
If, if we voted through, it doesn't mean that you have to hire somebody.
Okay.
Okay, move on, sir. Article sixteen is replacement shed for cemetery, says total, says nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. And, uh, that's what it is.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I did try buying a shed recently, and I could not believe how expensive it is. All right. Article seventeen, so this is air conditioning at town hall. We don't have a number here. George, this is, this is, you know, I know you brought this up originally.
Yeah.
Um, is this something that we can ref, I think we might want, this might be something we want to motion to refer to, to get, you know, some additional information, how much is it gonna cost, you know? I don't know who we refer that to.
Well, uh, I like your idea, but just to make sure we get this thing kickstarted, because we really need this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, let's throw a number in there that's not a little bit reasonable.
I, yes, I, I don't have a ballpark.
I'm not okay with that, because it's, the, the town hall is a very old place, and how do you say? We have, we, we have no idea how much that stuff costs. Right, so I don't want, and I guess the reason why I'm saying that is, look what happened with, uh, council on aging. They went and said, okay, we need five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but then that number really didn't mean much in the big picture thing, so then I went back at it again, trying to get more money.
How about this?
We really didn't make it.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, um, but town hall gets very uncomfortable in the summer, as you are.
Yeah, I agree.
Those units that we do have in some of the offices, they're terrible. Uh, what we, I spoke to a building inspector, and, uh, what he seems to think might work is some mini splits.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any idea how much a mini split goes for?
No idea, but they're very efficient.
Yeah, you know, why don't we, if we pick a number now, they, uh, twenty thousand dollars would do two or three mini splits, I would hope.
But I think they need like, they have like nine zones or something.
Right, I mean, it would be a Stein, is what I'm getting at.
But I don't think we can even add a number in here right now, because it's already in the article without a number.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
I would, um.
I, I don't feel comfortable doing it, and I, trust me, George, I appreciate it, and I feel for everyone that's in the town hall who has a window AC unit in old, inefficient building, so I completely agree with you, I'm just thinking a bit more from practicality.
So, so, let's think this through, so if we refer this to say the.
I would refer to the building committee or the facilities, well, I would, the building committee.
No, no, I don't, I don't think, we're not building anything, but just don't complicate what we're doing. The building inspector, he's the one that should be working this, uh.
Building facilities manager.
So, a new building.
Yeah, okay, so regardless, so say we refer to the building inspector for further study, so they, he, building inspector can come back with a number for us, and then, then, now luckily, we're going into the winter anyways, so by the next town, town meeting, then if we have a solid number, and then we can, I'm sure the mini splits, I don't think they take, it's, uh, they're ton, very difficult to install, then we, then we can have a, a number ready to go and actually get through that.
Do we have another special in, in the spring?
Not unless we need to, the next meeting.
That's the other thing, if we, if we wanted to, we can have a meeting whenever we want.
Yeah, they're just, they're just, they're a lot of work and a lot of.
We, I mean, just, I'm just saying, we, if there, there could be a couple items that we wanted, that are all our time sensitive.
There's more items that are, that are being held up right now, right, so there's, you know, one of the other ones.
So you can, and you can indefinitely postpone or bring it back in May. Or you, or you could.
Should we do that, indefinitely postpone it and bring it back in May?
Or, yeah, then you don't have to refer to somebody specific.
Yeah, and then, in that case, and then we, we can just, outside of this, have this, that's something that, that facility, yeah, that Jeff can go look into.
Facilities manager.
It was too bad that I just forgot that number, no, I'm done.
Gotcha, but well, you know, maybe formally request it, so, you know, something of that nature.
And again, this is a recommendation that the selectmen is making, that, I mean, I assume it's gonna, it's, so it'll be passed over at the meeting, but, you know, keep in mind that anybody can bring up anything on the floor, you know?
Okay.
So seventeen is gonna be indefinitely postponed.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, eighteen, so it's addition of funds to supplement tree warrant budget, so tree warrants asking for additional ten thousand dollars. Okay, eighteen. Board of Health, so Article nineteen, Board of Health to be elected independent of the board of selectmen. So, now, one thing that came up when we were doing, I was doing a review last week with, uh, supposed to town hall, this is, we have, we have, or a question we should expect, right, is whether this is paid or not, and it's currently not paid.
Right.
Doesn't mean it can't be paid in the future, but.
You know, we've, we've never had a long discussion about this. I understand how you put it on here, and I kind of agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
Problem I have with this is, we're going to appoint a board, okay? Once you have appointed boards, you have no control over them.
It's, yeah, so there's two different, it's kind of confusing, so there's, not confusing, but so, if you look at this. So currently, I'll just read this, might be clarified, so currently, the board of selectmen also serves the board of health, both Articles nineteen and twenty on tonight's warrant, see two separate, responsibilities of the board of health from the board of selectmen by creating a separate board of health. The difference in how the number, um, how the members of the new independent board of health will be selected. So Article nineteen is what you're talking, we're talking about, I mean, I missed Article nineteen.
No, it is not, I, I think it is nineteen where it would.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, that's one, so nineteen would be elected.
Yeah.
So they would be, you know, just like, just like we are.
Okay.
Nineteen, uh, Article twenty would be appointed. So these are, obviously, Articles are, uh, conflicting, right? So only one of these can get passed.
Or neither.
Or neither can get passed, and it will stay the way it currently is.
And if it's gonna be appointed, it has to go to the ballot.
What, what is the?
So.
So, yeah, but, look, here's the way I'm looking at it, we board of selectmen, we're not doctors, and I.
Or engineers.
Or engineers.
Food safety people.
But you're gonna, you're gonna elect or appoint another board, they're not gonna know any more about healthcare than we do.
I, I think that the hope is that people like doctors or nurses or people of that nature would be more, would run, right? Or, or someone who's an engineer who's understands like TATA five or all that. Like hopefully that they would be, cause they might not be interested in, in, in the board of selectmen, all, all the overcompensating things we do, but they may be very interested in some of these more, the more niche.
Well, I, I get it, but you know, it's just more bureaucracy, and, uh, I don't think it's gonna add anything to what we do.
You guys can.
Uh, I mean, I, I would have some other ideas, I won't bore you with that today, but it's, it's gonna be just more people that don't know any more than we do. And, you know, we have, we have so many boards now, and it's so much bureaucracy, and it's a, in some ways, I feel it's a detriment to getting the job done. You know, I'll stop there.
No, I appreciate your, your view on that. I mean, I think, I disagree, I think that, I think that potentially, we, we get, we have people who are, who were on this board, who were elected, I, I think they should be elected on this board, who are passionate about these type of things. I think they might have the time and, and, you know, knowledge to get. are passionate about these type of things, I think they might have the time and, and, you know, knowledge to get more stuff done. And that, that, that's, that's the potential out, other outcome.
Yeah, I, the way I see it is this, that I agree with Trevor and the fact that it, it should be elected, not appointed. And I'm hopeful that if someone's running for the position because they're knowledgeable and want to do the job. Right, and they know more than us, I, I worked in an engineering firm before, but I don't know anything about it, right? So when stuff's brought to us about something, I know very little about it. When someone brings something about health and safety, I don't know anything about that, so I'd rather, I'm hopeful that we have someone else. And I do appreciate what you're saying, that the more people you have out there, that the.
More opinions, I think there's, there's something to be said for that for sure.
But the other thing is, we have a board of health agent.
Mm-hmm.
That's the person that should be doing this, okay?
Yeah, knowing.
And that, the other.
And they're the doer, they are, they're, but, but great now, so, so think of that, this is what I think, so we have one board of health agent, right? Obviously is an expert and understands, hope, you know, should understand all these different things. We're, we're solely relying on their advice, you know, and, and there's no kind of ability for us to make it educated, you know, to totally go with that or to even push back on it, because we don't have a, we're not coming from a place of knowledge, right, if there, but if there are people who are specialists in it, that, the board of health agent and the, you know, they have.
Board of Health for.
Yeah.
For good, knowledgeable information, you know, rather than having appointed or elected people, we should have maybe hire a medical consultant for a few hours a year, I mean, from what I've seen, it doesn't really work, you know, you have to have a professional that knows this stuff. I totally agree with the concept that started this, you guys, you know, we don't know what the hell we're doing when it comes to healthcare.
Yeah, it wasn't even the one that started, I'm not sure how.
Well, yeah, well.
But I can agree, but I tend to agree with it, I guess is why I'm sitting here and taking back.
But it's, the thought was good, but.
Yeah.
I, I, again, I just see it as more bureaucracy, another committee, whatever, you know.
I mean, you know, we could always just not.
Make no recommendations.
And this kind of, I think that's might be a sense in this, because it directly impacts us, maybe we shouldn't make our.
Yeah.
Opinion on it, is that?
No, no, you should.
You don't have to, I mean.
No, I, I'm just, it's like, uh, I mean, I, I support it, I guess, I think Jared mentioned you support it.
Yes, I support nineteen, not twenty, I, I think that if anything, it needs to be the townspeople who decide who's in there.
Well.
I don't wanna be the guy who decides who, whether it's George or Trevor or that goes, you know, I, you know.
How about that? Can we put this off to the next meeting so we can really discuss this, I'd like, look at all the options.
You can't because it's already.
It's gonna be voted on tonight either way, so our recommendation is just.
But our recommendation can be, put it off to the next meeting. I, I really feel pretty strongly that there's gotta be a better way to do this, okay? This is, this will not solve the problem that we have.
If I might, you could be setting up the scenario with when you cook spoiled McLaughlin.
Yeah, no, I don't.
You're gonna have three individuals, could be me, could be anybody in town who have different opinions on health and how, how, what standards we should have, uh, when it comes to variances.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's hard enough to get a building inspector to agree, you know, when we're looking at setbacks from wells and whatnot, two people. Now you're gonna add three people to the mix, you're gonna have, the board of health agent is still gonna exist, is still gonna be the.
The enforcement, enforcement, yeah.
Is there any reason why if, if you, your board has a question as to what the board of health is doing?
Mm-hmm.
There's no reason, there's nothing that says that your board or the town administrator can't go out and seek another opinion, you're not. The, the board of health agent is in a, is a hired, is a hired hand, is a hired individual. If you don't agree with that opinion or if you want a second opinion, nothing says that we can't go outside of town and get a second opinion, whether it's from an engineering company, whether it's from a, a, a health, a health consultant, corporate agency or, or medical agency, so this, this just, what George says, it's more government.
Mm-hmm.
It's, do we wanna expand the government and it also takes some of the, does it take, the, the authority away from, the other question is, does this take the authority away, the voting authority away from the selectmen, which it does. If I'm, when I read this.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying.
If that goes through, you're out, the selectmen have no say in that matter. May, it's gonna be a lot of conflicts with projects that come up that you'll vote yes on, on part of it, but you'll disagree on the other part of it. Where, because you're, because you're giving that authority up.
Yeah.
Doesn't make, it doesn't really, doesn't make a lot of sense.
No.
I actually, you're kinda lunging me a little bit there, I mean, I don't wanna, I'm still leaning in my direction to a certain extent, but I, I do appreciate what you're saying. I, I've leaned on other people for experience in a lot of different things too, right? And as someone who has to deal with the board of health, I'm the one who, and I, I call on people and ask for their opinion, so I can appreciate that.
So all we're doing right now is trying to decide whether we're gonna recommend this, make no recommendation or recommend that we, we, um, postpone it, so when you get out there, you can again.
If you recommend, if, if the board recommends that the article's postponed.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it will be.
Do you have to put it on the next warrant, you don't have to.
No.
Yeah.
You're not obligated to, so if the board, if the board recommends to postpone it basically, which is withdrawing the article.
Yeah.
Which, because you cannot withdraw the article.
But let's, can we do this, let's postpone it, and I mean, and we can bring it up at the next town meeting and let's have some good discussions.
It's, it still has to be voted on.
Yeah.
We have, the townspeople have to vote to postpone it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So this is our recommendation.
Your board recommends that, your board doesn't recommend postponing, we're less likely to do it.
You two swing me, I, I will, I agree.
Okay, so if it's to both of you guys think we should, we should postpone it, then we'll put it on the postpone good list, thank you, yeah.
Um, and then I'm just gonna caution you that.
I appreciate your listening.
Yeah.
It might be.
The broad, persuasive.
Most beneficial.
I get it, appreciate it.
Sorry, please, I was just trying to talk.
I didn't pick up a mess, so I don't wanna talk about it.
It, it might be most beneficial, if, if it does get voted, the motion does get voted to indefinitely postpone it, to actually bring it up next special town meeting, and I just say that because once you vote this, now you're no longer the board of health, we need to elect the board of health and the elections are in like April, you know what I mean, so timing wise, it may be best to put it off until, but we can talk further if again, this goes out to the, to the residents and the people.
Yeah, yeah.
If nineteen is, um, in, postponed.
We need to move along a little bit.
Twenty is mute really.
On the other end.
Cause it talks about, about whether to vote.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so I guess we'll, and.
So we put the same thing for that one?
At that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We still have to go on all of this.
Yeah. Twenty-one, so this is, um. Availability of articles to, to the public, so Article twenty-one, so this is, um, posting the warrant, striking section one point one eight, uh, there, there are the words seven each time they appear. So pretty much it's changing it from seven days to fourteen days.
Yes, yeah, notice, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, alright, so that's twenty-one, we support that.
Yes.
Twenty-two is going to be, um, I would, uh, probably withdraw, uh, well, passed over on the floor. So we can.
Pass over.
Uh, we can put that in our postpone as well.
And this is posting warrants, it's pretty much what the issue here is, that this is to increase in places that we post the warrants.
Right, but the library and.
Practicality, it doesn't work out because there's, like, it's, we can't get, but by the time the warrants are ready to be posted, Tr- uh, Carlton doesn't have time to actually get those in all the.
Plus the mailings we're doing now, that we have.
Yeah.
And the signs, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah.
Did you get, uh, mailing?
Yes, I did.
That was a, that's been a very handsome mailing, by the way, alright, so that's Article twenty-two, so we're gonna pass over that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, indefinitely postponed, what we'll call it.
I'll, I'll definitely postpone it, okay.
I think that would be the best way to poop them all together and then make them all.
I like that. Okay, so that's twenty-two, twenty-three is standing votes, this is just a procedural kind of change, the bylaw that allows, that kind of room, you can raise your hand instead of standing, because we have folks who can't stand.
Mm-hmm.
Seems like an overstatement, maybe.
Yeah, we can support that.
That's twenty-three. Twenty-four, it's same thing, just like kind of a procedural change related to the standing. So, special town meeting forum increased, so this is going from ten people, which is a very s- small number of people. Just if you have the people who are on boards there, you meet the forum and increasing it to twenty-five people, so I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then this is Article twenty-six, establishing a bylaw committee. So this came from, you know, we have the, there is a bylaw committee now that's looking at just the town meeting related bylaws and a lot of stuff came up during those conversations that, you know, pointed to the fact that we kind of need a, a more broad bylaw committee that's looking at all of our bylaws on a pretty continuous basis to see what, you know, things just are wrong, like there's conflicting bylaws. And then we have, um, you know, things just gotta get cleaned up and changed with the times, so there was some, some disagreement on what this bylaw committee should be, like what, who should be made up of it or should be made up of who.
I think they'll be coming in with some changes on the floor to be taking out the moderator and adding planning board or designee.
Yeah.
Um, just so you know, that'll, um, will come up on the floor.
I think in theory, and, I think I support this as a, in theory, you know, I'm, I'm okay with some minor changes to whoever makes up that board, but, or that committee. Real agreement?
Yeah.
Alright, so that's twenty-six. Alright, moving on, twenty-seven, so this is changing the bylaw, um, the zoning bylaw to allow veterinarian offices. So this is at the four corners in its own, there's that blue building that my grandfather actually stoned. That is now going to be a, they're trying to have a vet's office there, but our current bylaw, zoning bylaw will not allow it. So this is just changing the bylaw, it seems to be the easiest way for them to actually, uh, make that happen.
Support that.
Yeah. Alright, measure of wooden, wood bark and lumber, lumber for, uh, Article twenty-eight. So this was pretty much us appointing two people to be the measures of wood. We only have, currently have one, I think, and this is like an archaic kind of position that's never actually been used, but
Need to.
We need to have two, and so. Um, and I think the only person who is currently the measure of bark is also a seller of wood.
One of the guards.
So, we need to have at least two. Um, okay, so that's twenty-eight, we support that. Twenty-nine, parcel of land for the board of selectmen to the conservation commission.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. It's like, yeah, swamp land.
Yeah, thirty should, um, is, is, probably have a motion to pass over on the floor, so we, I would recommend that even, um, we might wanna just to put that in the list of indefinitely postponed.
Yeah.
On which one?
Thirty, the map.
Okay.
The zoning map.
So we're postponing that, okay.
I, I'm just saying, based on, um, um, the conservation commission will probably come up and ask for it to be.
Okay.
I think we don't have the map.
Right.
Okay, we'll let them do whatever they're gonna do.
Yeah, so I was supposed, yeah, they'll be on our permanent postpone.
Yeah.
List, but, and then thirty-one is authorized water selectmen to appoint parking control officers, so these people we can have at the boat ramp and the, you know, and actually get to give tickets and hopefully enforce some of the, uh, some of the rules that we've made already.
Yeah.
Alright.
So the only one that you guys found hold was on Article two.
Mm-hmm. Alright, so Article two is.
Article.
This is the purchase of the, of Zero Elm Street, Tezdel Pond Dam and Waterline.
Okay, that, uh, number one, I don't think we have, or at least I haven't seen an engineer's report. There's liability issue, there's, there's a lot to this.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's way too complicated, we, we haven't done our homework. Uh, the question would be, why do we wanna do this, what are the liabilities, how much is it gonna cost us? What is the engineering report look like? And, uh.
And, and seeing the engineering report, um, as, as to the health of the dam?
Yes.
Yeah, so I know that, that has been done, I have not seen it myself yet, either, um.
I've never done.
Uh, I mean, uh, recently, yeah.
Do have, um.
Recently, and they did, they did some stuff, upgraded based on their recommendations, I know that.
Right, there, there is a report and there was some work done on it and I was waiting for an updated report. Um, which I don't have yet.
So.
We don't have it.
I, we don't, you're correct, we do not have it yet, um, you know, why we want it, right? I mean, I, I do.
I think we should ask the, uh, Water and Sewer Commission to stand up and explain why we want to. I mean, we want this so that we can put the sewer line in using existing piping.
In a covert, yep.
And, uh, so, so I mean, the reason is not that we want the dam.
No.
We want the pipes.
Yeah, it's one of those things is, if, they want, they, they don't want the dam and we want the pipe, so it's a deal, we'll retake over the dam and we get the pipe.
Good question.
Yes.
Um, does Churchill and Banks have any, is there, is there any deeded rights to the land under our roadway where they installed the water line? Is, did the town, I think this was installed in the sixties or the seventies, if I recall.
Mm-hmm.
Did, was, was there anything deeded or granted formally by the town that gives them the rights to have that pipe under our roadways and/or if they don't have that?
Can we just take it?
It's our pipe.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's a good question.
Even if it wasn't, even if it wasn't our pipe, that's abandoned property because it hasn't been touched two years.
Well, it could be considered under laws of, uh, adverse possession.
Mm-hmm.
The town's possessed it for twenty, twenty years.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if adverse possession would come into play, but I don't know how much they're gonna fight us on it. Um, as far as the dam, I don't know, owning a three hundred year old dam is high on my bucket list because I live in East Freetham. I'm not gonna get flooded out by it.
Yeah.
How much more is our liability insurance gonna go off? There's a lot of questions the board hasn't asked.
There's another issue too.
And, um, what, as I said, what stops us legally from taking, taking, we don't need the pipe that crosses the bridge and that's where the, the dam is, the pump station is the dam. We need the pipe that runs down South Main Street.
And under twenty-four, that's the biggest one we need, that section right there.
Right, so why do we want, why do we, why take the dam, why take, when we, if we don't have to? So this, this doesn't make any sense why it was even put on there that way, now there may be a possibility that we, they may not gift it to us. But then again, if they're not willing to, we should also look into legally, if they're not willing to maintain that pipe which is under our roadway, which puts our roadways at jeopardy potentially, we can take that. We can take it over because they need to, they need to maintain it to a standard. There's a lot of alternatives rather than taking the dam which potentially could cost us. I don't like writing, I don't like writing blank checks.
Nope.
To anybody, whether it's to anybody, that's, that's my thing.
One more issue with this that could bite us, you know, where eventually, is that the, the federal government and I believe the state is trying to do away with all dams.
Mm-hmm.
So.
This is a big issue.
Yep.
So if we want to.
I don't know where that, that are trying, I mean, just.
It's an, it's an ecological, uh, uh, ecological thing with the, um, like the DEP because it, the dams, um, prohibit the fish from flowing their natural habitat, you know, cause some of them can't flow upstream or downstream.
You have to build a fish ladder, it could cost us a million dollars.
Right, so.
It's not a, it's not a, a moving ladder that just goes in.
Right, there, there is, um, grants and stuff for that type of stuff, so.
The, the other thing is, is do we have any projected, do we know how big the line is? And do we have any projected cost to actually put the sleeve in? Because this is something that's gonna come up to the town, so I don't wanna take, I, I'm all for doing the project if the project is financially feasible.
Yeah.
And I think everybody in town would be.
Yeah.
But you as a board have to come to us and you have to present an argument which makes sense.
Yeah.
And you're not telling me how much this is gonna cost to go from town hall, under twenty-four, I believe it connects just past twenty-four to the.
To the stop and shop, kind of, around that.
How much that's gonna cost for that sleeve, so if you can give us numbers, do you stand a much better chance of getting an article?
And that is all gonna come, like this, this, so the way this kind of came up, this was the first step, because none, none, none of that was gonna be feasible without getting this done. Because none none of that was gonna be feasible without getting this done.
I don't wanna give your board, I I as a towns person, don't wanna give your board the authority.
Yeah.
To take a dam, to 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 own a dam and put that financial liability on me as a towns person.
Yeah.
And then the project doesn't go through, what happens if the what happens if it's five million dollars to to do the sewer? And the town decides, the townspeople say, look, you know, because we can have another pizza joint, it's not worth five million dollars.
No, that's totally fair.
And it doesn't go through, now you I I don't I don't wanna give you that authority upfront, I want you to give me some real hard numbers. Going forward, that's why that's why you shouldn't recommend this.
No, I I I heard you saying, I mean, like I was saying, this was the first step in to get to that kind of bigger picture, which all come, I I totally understand your point, like, you know, it. Taking taking on that liability for potentially not happening, I think that's a very valid point.
The problem is that this stuff here, this first step puts us right in there totally committed.
Yeah, I guess, so I guess there's a bigger issue anyways, regardless if this goes through, I should mention, is that Copart's.
Mm-hmm.
Has a right of first refusal with with Churchill and Banks, so we can't even buy it anyways or can't even get it anyways if we want to. And and what we've heard, Copart's not gonna budge, so.
Oh, so then there's no point.
So this, I mean, yeah, so I think that we should look into legality of like.
The pipe.
Is it an eminent domain type situation, is it something of that nature?
And I have I have tried to look into some of that, trying to see if there was a deed to the town, if the town accepted it, but um I haven't been able to find anything.
Yeah.
There's probably no paperwork anywhere that says they own the pipe, so we may be able to take it. But to your point, I think that's the key point, what you just said.
Mm-hmm.
Is that uh, how did you say it?
It's like if it never goes through and we take on this liability.
Well, this just gives you the authorization, it doesn't.
Yeah, that's the that's the other thing.
It doesn't it doesn't mean you're gonna actually follow through, it gives you the authority to the.
But so on a proceed from a procedural standpoint and more of a public relations standpoint. When the board comes and they present articles.
Yeah.
Okay, this is submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
There's gonna be, you can't just throw articles out there, you gotta, I want the board to be brought forth in the best light. So you guys look, well, board is all guys, so you gentlemen all look like you you doing your homework.
Yeah.
And you're on top of this and when this the way this is right now, it doesn't look that way. It makes the boards look like they're not doing that.
Uh yeah, mm-hmm.
You know what I mean, so I would I would ask, and I don't know if you can do it, I don't know if Michael can, that you 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 make a a relatively lengthy statement, which you're allowed to do. And recommend that the article be voted down.
Yeah, I mean, so I I totally understand where you're coming from, I think that S W was kind of just saying too, like this, the way we I saw this was this was the first step. In us being to just authorize it, we wouldn't we we're not gonna go forward with it.
You cannot do that because if you take that first step, you're committing the town.
Not not necessarily.
No, no, if this were to pass, this authorizes.
The board.
Three people.
Yep.
To make that decision.
Right.
Understood.
It's putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
Before all, and before the way I look at it, any homework was done other than there is a pipe, we could use the pipe, let's own the pipe.
Yeah.
But we don't know, the pipe could be full of tanks, we don't know, the pipe could be collapsed in a lot of areas, we don't know.
But I think what you brought up earlier, I think is a real important point that we should not forget about, we may own that pipe.
Alright.
Nobody has a deed for that pipe.
No.
That's town property, it's in the street.
So I mean, I I I feel comfortable, I mean, this can be on a the uh postponed indefinitely postpone list, that's why I'm with me, I mean, I think we there are more questions that need to be answered. I think that I understand what from your perspective where this come from, I you know, I just didn't, my intentions were were obviously not that, right? My intentions were this is the first step, not making any final decisions, you know, just like we're getting the ball rolling, looking, see if it even makes sense. But I understand when you read this, how that looks, I totally get that.
Uh outside of the meeting, I'll tell you a little story about an African elephant, but not right now.
Okay, alright, so we'll put that one on the uh two on the on the per uh the indefinitely postpone. Okay, so we have a only a couple more minutes here, so I'm gonna quickly make some motions. So I'll entertain a motion um that we support the following articles. Um one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen. Twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty-one. Um I'll entertain a motion, oh, sorry.
So.
Uh sorry, yeah.
Motion eight.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, I'll entertain a motion that we uh indefinitely postpone, the following motions, two, nine, fourteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two and thirty.
Okay, and you'll make those statements.
The the this was Michael got these, I think, right, or?
What?
How so um Mike McQ.
I will give him these, um I'll give him this information.
So so that when he when he reads them out, so this is just our recommendation.
You made the you made the motion?
Yep.
Uh one second.
Alright, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so with that, yeah, we have two quick things, so this is um.
Number eleven.
Number eleven, thank you. So discussion of vote on the transfer request from moderator for fifty dollars to fund attending fall meetings uh of city hall town clerks, Plymouth, Brazil and Dover counties. Um I'll extend that motion to approve that.
Second, I'll meet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so next is attend special town meeting, with that, I'll uh entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.